Mám otázku?
Ano.
Mám domov, ve kterém můj otcové byli pastory a jsem neměla zničený domůžený život. Mám velmi spravedlný domůžený život. A můj bratr je gay a já ne... myslím, že já ne...
Slynuji, co říkáte a mluvím v velkých, velkých simplifikacích tady. Neblázním vašich otců za to. Na druhou stranu, naše společnost je taková, že... No, znovu, musím být opatrný. Měl jsem přítel, kdo bez vědomí měl homoseksuální tendenci. Byl otevřený k tentování. Ale to bylo 70 let dávno. A v společnosti neexistovalo žádné tlaky, říkávané: "Oh, to je ten typ osoby, která jste." Takže tyto tlaky existují také. Pokud někdo řekne: "No, cítím, jako bych byl atraktivní k nim," no, to je to, co jste.
Ale jestliže využívám svou sexuality v tom, jak si vybrám, není heteroseksuální žena stejná?
Oh, absolutně. Je to... Boh říká v jeho slovu, že využíváte svou heteroseksuální v kontextu životního, vloženého vztahu s ženou. Ale říká také: "A je to jedna žena, John Oswalt." Ne všichni ženy, které se setkáte. Jaká je vaše atrakce. Ano. Takže otázka je: Co říká Boh o využití mého sexu? A jak pak vezmu svou tentování k tomu, co říká Boh? Boh mi říká: "Nedělejte adulteraci." Konec historie. Boh říká osobě s homoseksuálními atrakcemi: "Nedělejte to." To, co máme v dvou částech, které jsme se podívali, části 18 a 20, je vyjádření této situace, ve které se nacházíme dnes. Pokud cítím, že chci to udělat, udělám to a nezajímám. Pokud mám tu atrakci... A znovu, je v Anglii existující společnost pedofilie. A oni pracují hard, aby změny ležily. A dítě o pět nebo šest může dát svého přijatí. Takže to je, co máme tady. Pokud chci sex s mojí dcerou, ugh. Pokud chci sex s mojí kovou, pokud chci sex s mužem... Přizpěšme, ale LGBTQ, co to znamená? To znamená, že mohu sexovat jakýkoli způsob, jakým chci, s nikým, kterým chci. A Boh říká: "Ne, nemůžete." A naše otázka je: Chceme to přijmout nebo ne? vrátím se k tomu, kam jsme začali. Proč říká Boh těmito věcem tady? Protože to je způsob, jak fungují kanonáci. A proto je jejich zem prý, aby je zničily. Protože to je způsob, jak fungují Egypťané. A proto jsem vám to vytvořil. To je bod, který byl třikrát v těch dvou částech: začátek, střed a konci. Říkám vám to, protože to je způsob, jak fungují oni a vy nemusíte fungovat takhle. V Kanoně: "Moje sexuality je můj, používat bez boundaristů pro své vlastní účely." To je kanonáčský myšlení. A jak jsem již řekl, je to část tohoto světového pohledu kontinuitě. Všechno je spojené tady. A já mohu udělat něco tady, co bude mít vliv tam. Neexistují boundaristé. Nemůže existovat žádné boundaristé. Pro Yahweh, moje sexuality jí patří. To není můj, je jeho. A je používána v jeho boundaristích pro jeho účely. Dva odpočinečně opačné přístupy. Moje sexuality je můj, používat je pro své vlastní účely bez boundaristů. Moje sexuality je jeho, používat je pro jeho účely v jeho boundaristích. Takže nebychom měli být překvapeni, že sex je zvědavým bodem. To je testovací případ. Abychom zjistili, zda podmíním všechny své cesty k Yahwehu a jeho cestám. Ne, nebudu. Ano, podmíním peníze, ale nepodmíním svou sexuality. Ano, podmíním nějakou čas, ale nepodmíním svou sexuality. No, ale jsou tyto instrukce pro nás? Ano, ano. Byly pro hebrejské lidé. Byli jen zjistěni z slavby. Byli žili v Egyptě všechny tyto roky a tak byli nějak zneužitěni. Ale nejsou pro nás. Jsem mým, jako že "nejdi jíst kovu" není pro nás. Některé, ale ne všichni, instrukce Levitických jsou pro nás. Znovu, musím říct, že jsem být šokován, ale nezaměstnaný, když moje předchozí denomina přijala premaritalní sex, přijala určité formy adulterace. Ano, je to paket. Takže jak se to rozhodneme? No, číslo jedno: jaký typ instrukce je to? Mluvili jsme o tom předtím. Existují tři druhy. Ceremoniální, které jen mají společenství s možností jít do obchodu. Mohou se účastnit náboženských aktivit. Pokud jste v minulosti dotknul dědového těla, ne, nemůžete. Ceremoniální. Jak jsem vám řekl, moje pochopení těchto ceremoniálních zákonců je, že jsou objektní lekce. Prošle, vyučovat spirituální pravdu. A klasický příklad je Ježíš. To není to, co vstoupí do vašeho ústa, co vám stane nejasné. To je to, co vstoupí z vašeho srdce. Protože v srdci existují všechny druhů nejasné věci. Takže co to bylo vše o tom? Bylo o objektní lekci. Existuje to, co vám udrží tak jasně, jak zničená zl, v Bohovštví. Existuje to, co vám půjde, jak jste hrál manure. Rozumíte? Co je to, co vám stane nejasné? Kovu? Ne. Sladba. Oh. Je to ceremoniální? Je to civilní? A pokud si pamatujete, říkal jsem vám, že civilní leží podle času. Forma, která vypadá, je spojená s tím časem. Ale existují principy v nich, které musí být extraktní a ty jsou pro všechno. A pak existují morální leži, které jsou obvykle jen jednoduché návštěvy nebo jednoduché prohlášení: "Udělej to, neudělej to." Takže to je jedna z otázek, které musíme otázat. V jakém kontext leží lež? Cirkusně: "Pokud to uděláš, tak se mělo byš udělat to." To je cirkusně. Nebo je to funkční? Jiným slovem, se děje v náročnosti, v historii. V této situaci udělali toto, v této situaci Boh to návštěvil. Nebo je to legislativní? Je to v kontextu jasného stípulace? Pokud je morální a legislativní, je to pro všechno. Ale nad tím, co dělá Nové zákoně s tím? Existují některé návštěvy, které nové zákoně změní a klasický je, samozřejmě, jasné a nejasné jídlo. "Peter, jdi toto." "Boh! Nikdy jsem nic z toho jeděl v celém svém životě." "Jdi to." Okay, it's your fault. There are others where the Bible says absolutely not. Don't do that. You weren't supposed to do it then, and you're for sure not supposed to do it now. There are others where the New Testament doesn't say yes or no. And we've got to sort of find our way through it. Is it disapproved? Is it unmentioned? Is it mentioned, perhaps in a negative tone, or is it affirmed? Well, the answer on these sexual commands is clearly yes. It's for us now. It's stated as a moral requirement. It's an absolute. And the penalty is death. In the Old Testament context. Please don't misunderstand me. I'm not suggesting that today we as a civil society ought to put to death people who break the sexual laws. I'm not suggesting that for a moment. We're no longer a theocracy. That society, which was the vehicle through which God was setting out to save the world, yes, it's very much lockstep, very much put into this pattern. But we're not those people. So please hear me there. It is in the context, they are in the context of a set of requirements. They're not circumstantial, and they're not functional. They're in a set of requirements. You're gonna be in covenant with me, don't do this, do do that. And then, as far as I'm concerned, the final lock on the door is the New Testament. We'll not take the time to look at all of these references, but Romans 1:24-27, God has given them up. They have chosen to do these things which ought not to be done. And this is evidence of the utter lostness of the world society. 1 Corinthians 5:1, 6:9, again, those who do these things have turned against God. 1 Timothy 1:10, again, those who do these things shall not enter the kingdom of God. Then Mark 10, Jesus is talking about marriage, and he doesn't refer to these various sexual aberrations, but he makes it very clear that it's one man, one woman, for life. Deuteronomy 23:18 gives us some light on Revelation 22:1-5, excuse me, 22:15. This says, this is rather blunt, dogs will be on the outside. Deuteronomy 23:18 calls male prostitutes dogs. So, I say again, holy ethics is enveloped in the question of what will I do with my sexuality? And the answer is, I'll give it to God for him to use as he chooses in my life in his way. Okay, I want to talk in our remaining time here, and I'll give you opportunity at the end for questions. But I want us to look at chapter nineteen. I hope you got an opportunity to look at this. Holy ethics affect every area of our lives. Did you notice how they're all tangled up together? And of course, the headline is, you, and it's interesting, it's not a flat-out imperative. It's an indicative, you shall be holy as I am holy. Interesting. That's my goal, that's my desire. What does that mean? We talked now, weeks ago, about the nature of God's holy character captured in these six, seven words. What is it to be a holy person? It is to be good, it is to be constructive. It's to be true, be absolutely faithful. Your word is your bond. Again, how society has changed. I remember growing up in a farm community. Handshake. Well, he said he's gonna do it, he'll do it. Really? I don't see anything in paper. Don't need paper. Faithful. Right. She'll do what is right in that circumstance, whether it's to her benefit or not. Just gonna live according to God's standards and going to treat others according to his standards. Not going to play up to the rich. Not going to be partial to the poor. Pure, one thing, joy. This is what we were made for. This is what life is about. And over it all, in it all, through it all, choosing the best for others at whatever cost to ourselves. Love. That's what Leviticus 19:2 means, and it's what 1 Peter, chapter 1, verse 16, means. You shall be holy as God is holy. You shall manifest his character. How do you do that? Well, as I said, notice that they're not compartmented. Well, I'm really holy in religion, I'm not so holy in society. Can't do it. You either are godly everywhere, or the Bible would say you're godly nowhere. Yipes. Now, I'm gonna compartment them, simply for our thinking. But I remind you again, they're all tangled up, and that's, I'm quite positive, is intentional. Every part of our lives are intended to manifest God's character. It's not accidental that the major portion is social. If I cannot be holy in my treatment of you, it's foolish to talk about being holy in my closet. Honor your father and your mother. How interesting. That's where it starts. And I have to believe that is on purpose. At the outset, remember, you are a gift. You are the product of a man and a woman's love for one another. However adequate or inadequate it may have been, you are the product of somebody else's love. You're not self-made. You are a gift. And that, of course, then translates ultimately to an understanding, yes, and I'm not independent of my Creator either. But I think that's very significant. Immediately then, you go to talking about idols, and that's significant too. And I'll hopefully say something more before I let you go. 9 and 10, make provisions for the poor. Forgive me for being political here, but if we try to eliminate poverty, that is not gonna work. What we must do is seek to eliminate the causes of poverty. In our Sunday School class on Sunday morning, Denise Adams mentioned a situation that just broke my heart. A young woman, she and her husband don't have a car. She probably, according to Denise, could not get a driver's license, but she wants to work. So she's gotten a job in daycare, but she's gotta pay $20 a day to ride the bus to get there. And now that she has a job, she is no longer eligible for food stamps, 700 bucks worth. And now that she has a job, they're gonna have to pay full rent for their house trailer, which will amount to about $900. She can't afford to work. Something is wrong there, folks. Something is badly wrong. But make provisions for the poor. Jesus says, you will always have the poor among you. Make provisions for them. Don't cut all the grain at the corners of your field. When the reapers drop some grain on the ground, don't let them pick it up. Make provision for the poor. Don't abuse your neighbor or your employee or the handicapped. I've mentioned this before, but my dad has gotten a lot wiser in my old age. I remember him saying again and again, you gotta think about the other fella. Yeah, yeah. Don't take advantage of the helpless. A female slave, she's been promised to somebody else, and a guy takes her and sleeps with her. She cannot be prosecuted. She wasn't free. She was taken advantage of. I like this one. Honor the elderly. Stand up in the presence of an old man. And don't abuse the immigrant. Now again, there are foreigners, people who want to come into your land and just settle there and keep their foreignness. We're talking about them. But people who want to come into your land and become one of you. Ah, don't abuse them. Religious, not many, but a few. Number one, why did I leave out idols? That's bizarre. Number four, verse four, don't make idols. Honor your father and your mother, don't make idols. Remember, you're a gift. Remember, you're not self-made. And number two, don't try to use the world to bless yourself. Follow the prescribed patterns for sacrifice. Don't mix different species of things. Talking about purity. Allow fruit trees a chance to propagate. Give them three years to keep dropping their apples or their oranges or whatever, and sort of saturating the ground with their seeds. Don't eat blood. Do not use any divination. That is, trying to figure out the future through magic. Trying to read the stars. Trying to see what the sheep's liver tells you about what's gonna happen tomorrow. Don't do that. Don't cut your hair in peculiar ways. I remember my parents talking to me about that forty or fifty years ago. And don't scar your bodies. Don't cut yourselves in a funeral. Don't do tattoos. Again, is there a principle there? I think there is. Your body is not yours to use as you like. Your body is God's. And men, your wives. Years and years ago, we had a student couple, and he had a very nice dark beard. It was well-trimmed and very thick. And one day, he got tired of it and shaved it off. His wife went bananas. She said, the Bible says your body belongs to me. I like that beard. Your body is not your own. Observe the Sabbaths. Revere the sanctuary. I've said to you before, I, my heart breaks a little bit when I go to England and Europe and see the beautiful cathedrals. But at the same time, empty cathedrals. At the same time, I think these people were trying to express their love for God, and they did so in beauty. I think too often, we have lost that today. Again, again, you can worship a building, and it is nothing other than an idol. But to try to express our love for God in beauty, I don't think that's a bad thing. No mediums or spiritists, again, trying to short-circuit your relationship to God to figure out the future, or the past, or whatever else. No, don't do it. And finally, what I'm calling moral, just flat-out statements. Oh, okay, this is it. No idols, period. Don't do it. I'm not the world. You cannot represent me as part of the world. You cannot manipulate the world to satisfy your needs. Don't do it. Don't steal. Just, it's just flat-out there. Don't steal. Don't lie. Don't swear falsely in God's name. Yes, by God, I'm gonna do that, and you never intended to. Don't make your daughter a prostitute. And then, the very last, and again, I think this is significant. I think it's significant how I think it's significant how the thing began. Honor your father and your mother. I think it's very significant how it ends. Don't use crooked measurements. Five times in the Old Testament, that point is made. Butcher, don't put your thumb on the scales. Don't use a bushel basket that is not a full bushel. What are we saying? We're saying, God has made the world in certain ways and you live according to those standards. You don't change the standards to suit yourself. This is mishpat, justice. And it's interesting to me that some of the translations will say, "Don't use unjust measures." Actually, what it says is, "Don't use wrong measures, but use right ones." But, I understand where they're coming from. But there it is, there it is. So, all tangled up together, all used to try to make this point. It's one set of ethics throughout. So putting this all together, don't let anything undercut marriage and the family. That's the envelope in which these holy ethics are placed. Honor your father and your mother. Honor the elderly. Don't let any earthly thing come between you and God. Money, idols, house, car. In the, in the final analysis, that's what idolatry is about. Something has come between God and me and I treasure that thing more than I do the Lord. Keep the Sabbath, revere the sanctuary. Don't be partial in judgment. Love your neighbor as yourself. Interestingly, and this is, this is where that verse comes from, is from Exodus 19, the second part of the whole law. And Paul says, in Ephesians, think, the whole law is summed up in, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Don't defraud them. Don't hate them. Don't slander them. Don't bear a grudge against them and don't hesitate to rebuke them. Oops, oops, that's a little tougher. Don't take advantage of the disadvantaged, the poor, the handicapped, the immigrant. Don't steal or lie. Adhere to God's principles of right and wrong. Putting together those three chapters, there they are. Now, I want to say one more thing here before I let you ask questions. I hope as you read chapter 19, you noticed recurrence. Recurrence is a professor's way of saying repetition. Though technically, the difference is repetition is the same thing is being said over and over again. Recurrence is the same ideas are being said over and over again. Anyway, repetition. Why do we do these things? It's not pragmatic. Now, there are places where it will say, "Be faithful and you will be blessed." That's pragmatic. These are not pragmatic. It's just, don't do this. Do do this. It is not coerced. Only a couple of places here where it says they'll be cut off from the community. Exactly what that means is not entirely clear, but it's still, it's coercion. Do this or get in trouble. By and large, no, it's not that. What is the motivation? You must be holy because I am holy. And who am I? Yes, I am the Lord. I'm Yahweh. I'm the source of everything. I'm the goal of everything. I am the life of everything. So, so live this way. Because of who I am. 14:16, 18, 28, 32, 37. You think he's trying to make a point? Yeah. I am Yahweh, your God. We're sharpening it up a little more. I'm the one who has given himself to you. I'm the one who has chosen you. I'm the one, come on up into the New Testament, who's laid down my life for you. Do I have a right to ask you to live in certain ways? But he ups it even more. That's in 3, 10, 25, 31, and 34. And this would be the equivalent of the New Testament. I am Yahweh, your God, who has delivered you. So, what is that? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 times, 12 times. Why do you do this? Because of who I am in relationship to you. You must be holy because I, the source of everything, your God, who delivered you. Act this way. Great stuff, great stuff. Okay, questions, comments? Paul?
I recently came across a study of this that said this in many ways is open, it's as prophetic as it is a command. It says, the idea that when you unite with God, will within your spirit, along with God, then you shall be holy.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I think, I think that's exactly right. In many ways, that's what the whole Old Testament is about. God, we want to do that, but somehow we can't. God says, "Hang in there. I'm gonna send my son. He's gonna make the Holy Spirit available and you will be able to be this." Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's very good. What else?
I came to the conclusion years ago when I was working with Gerg addicts, that when I asked the Lord, "What is spirituality and what is sexuality?" And the two come together. But he gave me the term, "To know and to be known." Well, I found it in 1 Corinthians 13 at the end, but I used that with the guys. I didn't, to try to, hearing that about to show that it's a relational thing, not a functioning thing.
Great, great. To know and to be known, yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's all the difference in the world, but you must, you better. It's, would you listen to my voice? Okay, what else? I know you're tired of hearing about sex and we're not gonna talk about it anymore. But I hope, I hope this has shed some light on the whole issue that we're dealing with these days. Todd?
Your reference to Mark 10:6 to 9, and lots of examples, Jake got two wives and three children by handmaids. Do we look back and say that's a bad thing?
Yes, yes, polygamy. It was a social necessity in those days because an unattached woman was prey. Basically, all she could do was become a prostitute. So, it was necessary to attach a woman to a man. The Bible doesn't say that that way, but in terms of society, that's what it was. So, and as you ladies all know, men are the weaker sex. We keep dying and killing one another and so you had more women than men. So how are you gonna do this? So you end up with these polygamous relationships. But I would, I would ask you, I've asked you this over the years. Find me one polygamous relationship in the Bible that is good news. Every one of them is bad news. Jealousy, hatred, infighting. So it is something that was a social necessity, but that didn't make it a good thing. So, yeah. Brigham Young aside, polygamy is not a good thing.
But even Jesus said, "I let you divorce your wife because of your hard heart." I always figured polygamy is part of that.
Oh, I think so, I think so. It's, it's, God says, "Okay, go ahead, but you're not gonna like this." Anything else?
Yeah, fundamental fact illustrated in contemporary terms. Men are from Sears, women are from Nordstrom.
And Sears is out of business. Yep, 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 yep. Thank you, friends. Thank you for listening, thank you for coming. I appreciate it very much.